Well, it's one minute after six. I'd like to call the Danieltown Council meeting from Monday, December 5th, 2016, to order. We always start off, the first item on the agenda would be public comment concerning any issue not on the agenda. Sure?
I think that's where it says that we step in. We are, I'm Tricia Mark and my husband John Mark. And actually, I'm a visual person, so.
Excellent.
This is.
Beautiful, thank you.
It's a piece of property that we're looking at. It's on 2177 South Daniels Road. And our, what's that? Oh, you want me up here?
Yeah.
From the center.
Yep.
You're a visual guy.
Thank you. I don't exist over there. So we're looking at possibly purchasing the 2177 South Daniels Road property. It's almost eight acres and it's currently zoned RE5. And before we move into throwing money into it and getting into a project, Eric suggested that we come and kind of present our idea here to see if it's something that would even work on that piece of property. Our basic idea for the property is we would actually like to preserve the farm area. I'm a mother of five kids and I love learning and I really love hard work and I feel like that's kind of a must for kids. And so I wanted to create something that allows kids in the community to come and learn and work on the farm. And so that is what the intention of Lilyfield's Farm is, is to create those experiences. The idea would include adding a, like, learning and discovery center that would have a couple of classrooms that the kids could go into. And if you turn, sorry, I didn't page number them. So pass, right past the intentions on the buildings that would go on the property. There is currently a residential building on the property and one barn. Number A, we would be adding, seeing if we could add a learning and discovery center. That would be kind of the look of the barn. Right there on the top, we would have playground and a sports field and a garden center and some walking paths around the property. The current farmhouse would stay and we would be looking to put an additional residential farmhouse. It would be my sister and I that would be running the farm and kind of taking care of it. We both want to live on the property. So if you go to the proposed plot plan on the next one, that's kind of our initial idea for the layout of the property. As you enter from Daniels Road, it would just have the road that comes up and circled around so people could either drop, drop the kids off and the parking lot would go on the north side, just along all of the things, the buildings. So it would have the learning center and some playground, a little greenhouse because it wouldn't work year-round to do without a greenhouse. And then a barn with some animals around it and a sports field back and back. And the proposed second residential would go on Lot C there. And then I left it totally blank as far as which entrances, because I feel like that would be more something that I'd like to go through the planning committee with, which spots you would like the residentials to come in on. We would be completely open to how you would like to enter, because I know the 2370 South Road that belongs to Heber, I don't know what the access is there, but we would be open to coming in on either side for that residential home that would be going in there. And just on the back page, we really felt like when we looked at this property as a family, that it was a good fit being right there next to the church and a couple of businesses around it, plus the residential for the kids being close to where they could come and enjoy it. That it would be a good fit for the town and the neighbors and just the community. And we wanted to just make sure that you know that we are open to you guys' ideas as far as planning the project, making sure that it fits in with what you guys would like to. So I think that's the basic overview of kind of what we're thinking of putting there.
Okay. Thank you. We usually have this time for comment, which is a great comment and it's perfect as part of visual guide, too, so this will answer, you know, conceptual-wise of what you've been talking about. Real shortly, where we're not going to have a big discussion about, we can, in the future, make this an agenda item and spend time on the council, which tonight would not be that night, since it's not on the agenda per se as far as your specific issue. Does the council have any quick questions that they might like to ask at this point? Thank you.
Number one, I've got, we've got the five acres minimum for residence.
But there doesn't any issues as far as that they'll.
Is that something that can work out? Or is that something that needs to be, they need to be joined somewhere?
And that's why I had her come talk to the council, because planning can't really do that, the council would have to do that. Would, I have a question. With the property, I'll say as one, as one parcel, or are you looking at somebody?
I, we would like to have it divided so that we can each pay our own bills, have the residential be separated, so as families, we're not totally connected with one percent. But the, the learning center and all of the gardens and everything would be in a family trust.
In a family trust. But you would want to separate the property?
Yes, we could.
That may be, that was my question, because if it stayed in the family trust, the whole thing, then we don't have to worry about somebody selling off a back parcel that's not compliant.
Yep. Well, and that's where we're open to, like, if we need to adjust some of the things that, that we need to, as far as that, then we can do that also.
Okay. So you're open with Tepan and the trust?
Yes, we're open to a number of options. Our, our.
I understand. Super. That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Is your contact information in here?
No. Do you want me to just write it down somewhere?
If you would. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Before we turn the time over to Mike, I'll, I'll have us have a fraud risk questionnaire, if we could work on it through the meeting and hand it, or give it to Lynn at the end of the meeting. It's something we do every year, but it's in our packet on the last page.
The last thing, it's for the audit.
So, it's a formality. Item number two, I'd love to turn the time over to Mike Duggan and he'll be able to bring us up to date on airport issues and upgrades and things that we probably ought to know what's going on.
It's great to see you again.
Thank you. Like, bring up the word audit and I'm, it's just a keep watch. I'm not sure what, how much you want from this, or how deep or not, or, well, how about this? It'll be a little bit eclectic, but, but anybody, anybody in the room could stop me anytime with a question, because if you have a question, somebody else probably does. These are the grant assurances that the city signed for. Every time they take any money in or property, pay it to the FAA, they reassume at least a 20-year obligation under these grant assurances, there's 38 of them. Some of them cut towards the city, some of them cut towards the FAA. This is the airport compliance manual. It's 636 pages of excellent reading. I'm kind of embarrassed to say I've mentioned it twice. This tells what this means. So if you think this is a pin, okay, I speak English pretty well, that's a pin. It's not a pin unless this book says it's a pin. I'm not kidding. This is my ball, my bat, my ballpark, I win. These guys wrote the rules and so we have a pretty big disadvantage right now. So going back to last summer, they, they wrote and built about four and a half inches of asphalt off the runway and replaced it with four and a half inches. In that process, because the city did not redefine print, they are now governed by a thing called a runway classification number. Ours is 32. I won't tell you what that is. It's a number and there's five letters or numbers behind that telling you about whether it's a flexible, non-flexible runway, blah, 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 substrate, all that stuff. So we have a number of 32, that's not a weight, unfortunately. It is just a number. And so most aircraft, not all, have an aircraft classification number. So you can just get a list, 32, and slide the aircraft classification number up and down there. If it's 32 or less, they can come here uninhibited anytime, forever. There are aircraft that are in the 150,000 pound class that are inside that 32 aircraft classification number. And it says in here that we have to allow occasional landings of aircraft that are 30 to 50 percent higher than that. And so basically, the FAA has now co-opted a really good word to use, discrimination. So if they, if they perceive that you're discriminating against a certain class of aircraft, like 747s, then they're going to whack you over the head with a big club with no remorse whatsoever. So, yes, sir?
What does that mean? Whack you over the head with a?
Well, okay. Basically, this document says that as long as we are at B2 airport, a B2 means aircrafts, with B means aircraft with approach speeds up to 70, 120 knots, and the 2 means we have to accept aircraft up to a wingspan of 79 feet. And so they want us to go to a C2 airport, which is, accepts aircraft with a approach speed up to 139 knots, which is basically all the business jets that you see coming in here are C2 aircraft, virtually every single one of them. The only three aircraft that we've had here, in here in the last couple of years is the B-17 that they bring in sometimes in the summertime. That's the only three that's coming in here. All the growth is going to be C2, C3, uh, C2 aircraft. So they want us to, unfortunately, there's a bunch of numbers. I mean, there's hundreds of them. Distance between runway and taxiway, aircraft object-free zone, runway protection zone, there's all these cones of escape, which basically mean faster aircraft need more.
More room.
More room to, to escape a bad situation. We're exactly 240 feet from 189 to the runway. We're exactly 240 feet from the taxiway to the runway. Those numbers both go to 300 feet. The end of the, end of the runway numbers, the object-free zone goes up to 500 feet. It's 300 feet now. There's, you can't have anything in there taller than three inches unless it's an aircraft taxiing to takeoff. So all these numbers, if we go to a C2, have to be bigger. Therefore, the shoe no longer fits in the box. So we have to rip up this runway that we just spent four and a half million on and move it south and west. How much, we don't know, because they've never, they've never written it down on anything, because I will grammar that, for freedom of information, as soon as they do. And not, I mean, not, it's not because of me, but just they did just haven't done it South and west, so basically, to get the shoe in the box, you're going to have to condemn some area inside Daniel and you're going to have to condemn some area in Heber City. How much? Again, I don't know, but.
You're saying west, that's closer to 189, right? I thought we had to go the other way.
Well, if you go south and west, it frees up the east end, and if you go south and west enough, it frees up the southwest end. Again, how much? I don't know. So here's, here's what the club they're going to try to hit us with. In certain period of time, eight, 10, 12 years, we've got GDA engineers that are right down there on 189 and 3,000 South. We've just hired them, the city has hired them, to be their aviation engineering consultants. So we've tasked them with coming up with a number of aircraft that are landing, how fast they are, what they weigh, and the frequency of the landing, and say, how long is this runway going to last? And they can come reasonably close, you know, 10 to 12 years, or some factor like that. Now, what the FAA is going to do to us is they're going to, they're going to wait until that time, because they know that this is a political hot potato in this community right now. And a bunch of people are starting to show up with stuff like this and say, oh, no, you don't. And so the capital improvement plan, the CIP, you have a four-year window and you put stuff in there every year. So every year, they have to give us $150,000 for fulfillment of the CIP. So we need new lights, we need new stripes, we need new patches and pot holes. But.
What was that acronym? What was that?
Capital Improvement Plan?
Okay.
Trying to keep it down with the acronyms, because they, they love that. So after that period of time, whatever it is, eight years, 15 years, they're going to say, you're not in compliance, because you're getting pot holes out there in the runway and you need to redo the runway. Well, Heber City is not going to have five or 10 or $30 million to do that with. So they're going to take them out of compliance for a year. They not only won't get the 150, but they're going to say, if you want any more money, you're going to have to move this thing south and west, tear up this runway completely, and build another 30 or 40 million dollar runway, south and west of this runway. And if Heber City says, no, they're going to, they're going to present them with a bill for every penny that the FAA has ever spent on this runway, and it's in the 15, 17 million dollar range. So Heber City is not going to have that money and they're going to collapse under that issue. So the fixed base operator, FBO, is a rather contentious fellow. He, as a matter of fact, he was convicted of unlawful detainment of a person on the airport board for whatever sense of reason. That's a Class B misdemeanor, so fairly contentious fellow, in my opinion. Has written a letter to Mayor McDonald, say, I haven't seen it, but I've had proportions of it read to me, that says, if you do, if you don't do this, we're going to sue you. If you do do that, we're going to sue you. He wants to, I think, maintain monopoly with his fixed base operation out there. He likes to do jets, because jets are thirsty suckers and they burn a lot of jet air, which he sells them for, for a lot of money, so. I believe that he's going to put, you know, try to dress up the pig a little bit and sell it to somebody, Vail Aviation or some other person, and take, you know, 18, 20, 30 million bucks out of here and leave, but, just my opinion.
Doesn't that go for bid occasionally? I mean, how does he have that locked in? That's public property.
Suffice it to say that nobody has read this book in Heber City ever before, about a year ago. He now has a contract, every time the guy, he actually literally wanted to pay them all, he wanted to buy a generator, a portable generator that he could leave with and say, that's a permanent improvement on the building, I'd like to extend my contract. He's been getting away with that. His contract is now out to 2041, right now. So 25 years, right now, he's locked in.
Who gets the credit for that?
Heber City Council.
Probably the Heber City manager. You don't have to be the council, we answer to that.
So we hired a brand-new airport manager, man's got a pretty sharp character, Kim.
I'm just curious, before you move on, the jet fuel issue. Is there, what type of revenue does Heber City or the county get off of both the sale of jet fuel?
The fuel flowage right now is four cents a gallon. He's selling it for around six. He were the highest price of gas anywhere. And he, you know, he, his actions indicate to me that he doesn't want to deal with local things with propellers on them. He wants jets coming in, because that's, I understand it, it's his business. The, his lease is the, is the most messed up thing I've seen. We actually did have it surveyed and there are about, there's like 26 different angles and points on the thing. He's been leasing, he's been tying down aircraft that, on city property and charging them for it, not in a substantial amount of money. We went out there and walked that thing and looking at the taxiways and the taxi lanes and the runway, if you divide that between just the city and the council, the county, or, I'm sorry, the city and the FBO, on what his lease rights are, it's a mess. I, I have no idea how to fix it. And if you, we're going to have to negotiate with him, is the short answer, because you can't make it work. I mean, I, I can draw it where you've got separate taxi lanes and stuff, but it's not going to work and everybody's going to hate it, so. So as a result of the threat of the, of the lawsuits, we hired, interviewed and hired an attorney from Denver, Peter Hirsch. He's a, he's a heavy hitter. He's a little bit more than the city's willing to pay for an hour, but he's really sharp. I spent a whole day with him over at the airport manager's office here last month. He's been in some big aviation fights, you think. He's been in Santa Monica, he's been in Naples, Florida, he's been in a couple of the big ones up in New York, all the ones that I'm familiar with. He's had a hand in it. So I think he can, I think he's a good hand and I think we'll put on a good, a good show if we get in a fight. But Nadeem, Nadeem Abubadar is the owner of the FBO. He's had Peabody legal firm, that's the largest aviation legal firm in the United States. Their biggest client is Delta Airlines. And so they're out of DC, so he's bringing big guns. This is, there's a lot of money at stake here.
My point is getting at is maybe, one of the arguments might be for the local people in the valley, that this could be a good thing, because we make so much money off the taxation of the fuel.
Heber City is the sponsor here. Heber City owns that airport, not Daniel, not, even though this says they have to put somebody on the board through an internal surrounding area, that's me. But they're the sponsors right now. So they make all the decisions, we still get the noise and the pollution, but they own it, unless they want to change that. Now, several airports around the country have gone into partnerships with their county or with other municipalities. There's one, Spanish Fork, they co-own their airport with whatever is to the south of Spanish Fork. So I don't know, there's others, there's some solutions out there. But if we're going to prevent the FAA in 10 or 12 years from holding us hostage, Attorney Hirsch came up with this idea, and that is, we need to get a thing called a sinking fund going. So when that 15 or $10 million or $3 million bill comes, eight years, 12 years, 15 years from now, Heber City's not going to have the money unless they're planning for it. My contention is, I think we ought to involve all the municipalities and the county and maybe make it Heber City Wasatch County Airport. That's just me talking now. And I don't know about, about you all, but I would be willing to pay something, whether it be a sales tax or a property tax, every year, so that if, and I'm making these numbers up, let's say that in 10 years, it's an additional $3 million. That may be, it's probably low, I don't know how much, but our engineering firm is going to be able to tell us about when the runway is going to fail and about how much it's going to cost to fix it. And come pretty close to those numbers. So let's say in 10 years, we need $300,000. Well, I'm sorry, $3 million. So we should be putting $300,000 away in a sinking fund specified for this purpose, so that when that time comes, Heber City can't extort the city. I'm sorry, the FAA can't extort the city. So just trying to plant the seed here and every place else that I can, that we, we need, I mean, we have to do it this week or this month, but we probably ought to get that moving in the next year or so, somehow, whatever we decide.
So the, the county or the city doesn't have the ability to tax the fuel?
The city does.
Well, why, what's, what's wrong with taxing the fuel for the $3 million instead of the residents of the, of the valley?
And then, is there any way that we could do like a carbon tax on, for the jets that are coming in?
Sort of EPA angle.
The answer is almost certainly yes, and it's almost certainly going to be a bonsai, a binding with no significant impact. The FAA, this is the rule book, they wrote it, and they don't lose much in court. So, sorry, what was your question?
Carbon tax on the jets that are coming in and going.
That, I, that's above my pay grade. I don't know, I can look at, look into it, but I, I don't know if anybody's gotten that done.
Well, it's just kind of coming out. It seems like it's kind of hitting all the big industrial areas, Kennecott and other ones they're trying to.
I don't know, I don't know if any municipality has actually gotten that done, or state or county.
I guess they've looked into it. But I think with the amount of jets that you're possibly going to be bringing in, the size of them, they're definitely going to be clogging more carbon into our valley. And you could hit them for the, for help, you know, to help mitigate it or to help take care of it, another way of taxing or getting revenue to improve here.
Well, in the last meeting, we, we had a dollar 10, a thousand above, 8,000 for transient aircraft that, for landing fees. And that was generating about, around 40, 45,000 for the city a year, not anywhere near the number.
That's it?
That's it. And so we bumped it the large, the highest in the inner mountain west, I think, is Grand Junction, and they were like 610. We bumped it to seven. And I fully expect to get letters from this other legal firm that the fixed base operators got from Heber City, saying, uh-uh, you're starting to infringe on our business here. And that's, they're going to, they're going to accuse Heber City of some kind of discrimination. Whether we win that or not, I don't know. That'll be, it'll be, that'll be a fairly good chunk of it.
If that's all the money they're making off the air. I mean, I had a meeting with Mark about this a while back, and, I mean, he didn't want to talk about it, but the bottom line was, he didn't say the city was making any money off the airport.
Here's the, here's the hard part. You can't take, even if you make money on that airport, other than property tax, you can't take it off the airport property. You can go buy a new fire agent with it to fight fire.
So that's the way it's designed?
That's the way. Here are the rules.
Back to Kim, and maybe you already answered, I missed it. So why can't FBO up a little higher or a lot higher, as far as, I know in the past, they've talked about, you know, I don't want to say parking fees, but, but, all the fees that might apply. I haven't heard of increasing the gas tax to, to.
There's a couple of those things that I think we're just starting to address and what our limits are, I don't know. We're just going to run this 70 bucks a thousand up the black bull and see who shoots at it, but I'm pretty sure somebody probably will.
Well, if it's double for these planes to fuel here, they might not want to land.
You know, if you own a 70, 60, 75 million dollar airplane, that is just numbers on a piece of paper and like, whatever.
Well, if there's no money, if there's no money going into the city, who's pushing all this? What, who's going to push them?
I do not recall. And I think this, I think the city and the fixed base operator, that's, that's where the.
One guy, one guy is getting all the money out of this deal.
So I think we're going to try to figure out a way to get another fixed base operator out there. We had a guy that came to the meeting a year and a half ago. He says, I'm ready to go and put another FBO out there. I want to service small engines, which OK 3 Air has indicated that they sort of don't want to do. And they, man, the chairman of the, of the committee and the manager, I, I know these meetings work and if the room is full, you can say, all you folks are here for this item number six, why don't we just move that up to number two? This guy was the number six and he stayed number six for like three hours and finally got up and said, he said, well, how serious are you? He says, I've got my checkbook, ready to rock and roll. It was like year ago fall. He said, I want to go out there and start doing some testing, there's a dump out here somewhere. I need to engineer it. And if it's two feet deep, that's one thing. If it's 38 feet deep, that's something else, engineering. But he says, I'm ready to go, and they, they ran him off. And so a couple of the city council people have subsequently gone back to that guy and he's like, you know, there's just too much acrimony there. Everybody's got lawyers and you've got, this thing's all tied up. Go straighten it out, fix, fix your, some of your documents and then come talk to me. I, I can stop any time. There's a, there's a document called memo standards. OK 3 Air wrote a good portion of those memo standards. And so there's some rules in here that say, you know, basically you can't cede control of the airport to somebody, somebody that's not a, that's a non-sponsor. And, you know, it's my contention that that's exactly what they've done, so they need to get control of them. So he said, for instance, if you have, you need, he's got 67 some odd square feet under roof, you know, as an office. So he just put in there that you need 6,700 square foot memo. He's got like five or six acres of ramp space. He says, you've got to have six acres of ramp space, or you can't have any memo, which is essentially his monopoly. You can't get around that, because some of those things don't exist. Plus, if you just start now, you know, you don't start off with a Walmart-sized building. So there's more, but you've got some other stuff, unless you have questions.
So, I want Mike to come in and let us and anybody in the room know what kind of the latest, what's going on at the airport, the timeframe that's out there, the studies that are going underway and will be underway. And I think it's something that us as a council and us as residents all just need to be aware that there's certainly marching going on in all directions from a lot of folks. And, you know, we're going to have some stuff presented to us one of these days or years that we're going to have to be serious about. Mike's, I'm sure this will be not your first or your last update, but maybe next year we'll have another one. Any other questions from Mike?
Yeah, a couple things. Go ahead. Did you ever make it on the airplane board?
I'm on the airport.
Oh, okay. Good. I don't know if make it on.
So were you aware of this meeting they invited us to, the planning meeting that Heber City held about the airport?
I was not.
And they had GDA tell me, give us this whole, this whole document about the runway?
I've seen, I've seen those drawings that you sent out.
Okay, this, this one was the one they.
Okay, this, this one was the one they sent us. I happened to get the other drawing that I got, it's from, that came out.
Our drone.
It came out three days after our meeting. Kind of convenient, they gave us this in our meeting, which is nowhere close to what came out. I had, what I was doing was downloading from the Dropbox, and I couldn't get into Tony Kohler's at Heber City, and so I, I wrote this brick patent.
Okay.
And he gave me access to that Dropbox, and when he does that, anytime he makes a change, it shoots it to me. So I actually probably had everything sitting in, but that was like three days after this meeting that we had.
One, one concession that the FAA has given us, we went down a couple of months ago for a planning meeting for, for this CIP money, capital improvement plan, you have to have, you have four years, and they want to know what, what you're, what's in your plans for buying or building or refurbishing. And the, the master plan study, which is about, which is about a three hundred thousand page document, says, we want it, we want a new runway, we want a new airport, what do we do? And some big airports have master plan studies, basically they just run around the clock, they just go on and on. Ours was due to go into effect in seventeen, and so those guys were starting to plan money for this new runway, and they were going to start, they were going to start laying asphalt in twenty or twenty-one. Well, the guy down there recognized that there were like eight or ten people that showed up from the Heber City, and there was one or two from all, all the other airports, and I was on the airport board before about twelve years ago, and this guy, John Bauer, who's now the head of the airport district office, and I pretty much knocked heads the whole time, so I've mentioned to a couple of the new employees, just say hi to John for me, and they said, they just kind of chuckled and say, yeah, we've, we've heard your name before, so anyway, here we go again. But they let us move that, the master plan study to twenty, which means we pushed this thing off, they're going to say, okay, well, you're going to be gone or dead, or, you know, somewhere else by the time this comes around, or some of you people are going to, hothead, you're going to take, take your eye off the ball, and we got you. But we just bought ourselves another, I'd say probably five or six years with just that, just that change. So, but we have to keep our eye on it for when it happens, and make sure we get a few pass downs to the people that are going to be running this thing, whenever that is.
Is there any suggestions as a council that we could do to the municipality that decides paying attention that, that would help the cause?
Absolutely, I, I would say get into touch with anybody that you know on the, on the county council and or the Heber City council, and say, look, this is all of our problems, we all get the jet noise, we all get the air pollution, we want to be part of the solution, and the sooner the better, because it's, I don't know what it would be, I don't know how much we'd have to pull out of our pockets to, to redo that, but we did ask GDA Engineering to come up with that estimate, said not only how long is it going to last, but how much is it going to cost? And of course, nobody knows what asphalt prices are going to be in ten years from now, but it's a good guess, we'll try to have something like that number in a piggy bank so that they can't hold us hostage.
And I kind of look at that like the preservation zone for the bypass, I mean, same kind of concept as far as.
Exactly. It's, it's called a sinking fund, and Peter Hirsch, our new attorney, said he, you know, could help us with some of that stuff. So we've got some, a few other, he's got a few other really good ideas, but I'm pretty sure this is not a privileged venue, so.
So a couple of questions. What if our town doesn't want it?
Doesn't want it?
Doesn't want the airport to go. Is it a done deal?
They, the feds will use eminent domain against the town of Daniel, and we will lose, we shall lose. There's no, there's no maybes, or we've got no chance, not going to happen. So.
If that, if that court is pulled.
If that, if that court is pulled, but if we've got the money sitting there, they can't threaten us, they can't force us to go to a C three, C two airport, they can't.
I've looked hard and wide.
So, so we can stay how we are?
If we keep the maintenance up.
If we can, if we can maintain all the things that a B two airport entails, all the stripes and whites and whatever.
Before any change happens, you've been saying eight, twelve, fifteen years, is it, are we eight years away before anything changes, do you think, or?
I don't know, Ryan could probably give you a better guess than I could, they just resurface the runway, and, you know, what they're going to do, slurry seal and do the regular maintenance, you know, every other year, or whatever they, however much they say they, they do, what is that, is it fifteen years, eight years, twelve?
I don't know on a, on a runway, on a road, I would expect that road to last ten to fifteen years or longer before you do anything more than, than surface seals, but I don't know if the airports do it more often or less often.
Nothing really is on the plan.
No, no, there's nothing out there, and in addition to that, I, I don't really see the tra, I think we've got most of the traffic we're going to get, I mean, there's a couple of jets that are based out here, but most of the traffic are, is, is what you'd expect, California, New York, east coast, west coast, rich people that can afford a jet to fly in here, and we're going to pay extra for a fifteen minute closer limo ride to Park City. So I don't think we're going to have a whole lot more increase than what we've got right now, because of one predominant factor, if the next time you're driving by Walmart, just look straight ahead up the hill, and you see a big pile of cumulofront up there straight ahead, so you can't get a, an initial approach fix out there, you have to have a certain distance between the initial approach fix and the ground, you can't get it out that direction. If you reorient the runway, it's zero four two two now, the opposite magnetic heading, if you reorient that zero nine zero two seven zero, the next time you're driving down Center Street, look out there, you can get an initial approach fix out there. So, don't bring that up.
One, one other thing, what, what's the yellow on this, does the yellow zone mean that you have to be below thirty-five feet, or is it more strict than that?
Uh, I don't.
It says RPZ CNT something.
Runway protection zone, and the runway protection zone, there's a big long list, I can get it for you, there's a lot of stuff you can have in a runway protection zone, you can't however live in.
Okay.
Or have.
So it's moving.
Or have, if they get this done, he's moving. And so is the guy on the corner. And they're not even that troubled with the fact that this thing goes across one eighty-nine because cars come and go, there's a lot of stuff you can have in, in the runway protection zone. Object free zone, you can't have any in there, and there's another half a dozen numbers that are just like that, in different acronyms.
So how is that, from the, from, just about the, the affected of the county, you know, where it takes into their, their chunk, and then it takes into the, you know, the down road, and like you said, I mean, yes, one eighty-nine on one side, and the county on the other side, so if they condemn that, they just, they just take that chunk of county, county property and then, county just has to deal with whatever they got left and do their thing?
Yeah.
Would there be a real advantage to have not only the other municipalities, but the county involved in ownership of the airport?
I think there would be, I think it's a perfect fit, I mean, I'm going, I don't know how many dollars I'm going to pay to not have more bigger airplanes, but, you know, if all of us are paying into it, I'm not sure it would be that much.
I think it's a great thing to at least look at and discuss.
But what if we have the funds, Mike, and then all of a sudden, Heber City decides, oh, we still want to expand?
Oh, they're not going to do that, they would be strung up.
They would be?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. They're not pushed back right now from the citizens, they don't really want the expansion.
Absolutely.
I admire your faith.
With the caveat that all I have to do is replace you five, and by, it's true, it's true statement, we can't tie the hands of the future city council, but they've been, they've already been warned that they will have a referendum petition if they do this, and that's only, that's a relatively new thing in the state, but that's what we did with the North Fields, and we've got a seventy-five percent majority on that vote, we've got that petition, and that was a lot more people standing out in front of the post office on cold winter day, I know, because I was one of them, but they would have a referendum petition in days.
Okay, but say, say they decide to, can Heber City condemn annual property?
It won't exactly be Heber City, it'll be the United States of America.
Okay.
And yes, they can.
But no, that, that's the scenario if we don't have the money, right?
That is the scenario if we don't have the money.
If we have the money, and Heber City just says, oh, we want to expand this thing, and they condemn, and.
They can, yes. But I'm going to, I don't know, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting more cynical all the time, I, I can't seem to keep up, but I don't, I don't think.
What's your price? What's the good to ask for?
All right, I'm sure.
Well, thanks, Mike, that was, appreciate it.
And all your efforts on that board.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. I'm going to put a bean to it.
Did you get those mic, did you build that secret?
Item number three, Daniel municipal water matters is necessary. Resolution on new water meter rate structure, discussion of wage increase for water personnel. I'd like to turn the time over to probably Ryan, who may have that water meter rate structure, and then before we leave item three, we'll also discuss the increased rates for water personnel.
I think you guys have a resolution in front of you. So we talked last month that the, the rate schedule we had, not only included bigger impact fees for larger meters, which makes sense because they have a larger impact on the system, but requires us to set aside certain uses. And so we had a rate schedule that went up by meter size, so if you had a bigger meter, you paid more for the same gallonage. And the discussion was whether or not that really makes sense, because it costs us the same amount to deliver a gallon of water, whether it goes through a three inch meter or eight inch meter, sorry, four inch, because we stopped with four inch, or four inch meter. And so what we did, or what I did, is I went back to it and I recalculated, so the numbers are all staying the same. The, the only thing that really changed here is the base rate. And so the logic is that the reason you buy a bigger meter is you want more water. I mean, if you, if you were happy with, you know, twenty thousand gallons a month, a three-quarter inch meter's fine. You know, if you put in a two, three, four inch meter, it's because you need a lot of water. And so what I proposed in this rate schedule is keeping the fees exactly the same as they were, but upping the base rate, such that if you have a bigger meter, you, there's a larger base before you start paying that overage. So you're not paying more for your water if you use a lot, but if you're not using a lot of water, and you bought, bought a big meter, you pay a larger minimum bill, because we have to have pumps and tanks and storage and resources available when you decide to turn on the tap. And, and all that causes, Kim, Harper, to make sure that if somebody opens a fire hydrant, that everybody still has water the next day.
Okay. And we had previous discussions about getting this to this point, as far as a new rate schedule.
So, yeah, yeah, so help, help me get the base rate, if I, if I had a four inch meter at my house, I'd have to initially pay a lot more money.
Yes.
Then my bill every month would not be any more than anybody else's.
Not, so you'd pay a lot more than everybody else?
Monthly.
And then monthly, you would pay a lot more than everybody else?
Okay.
But you would get a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons before you went into the overage category.
Okay.
If you got your three-quarter inch meter, you'd only get twenty thousand gallons a month.
Got it.
So basically, and, so the downside to this is the water conservation, is, is we're saying if you put in a four inch meter, you're going to use a hundred thousand gallons a month. And so what I did is I calculated those rates based on the overages, so I, I used the same rate structure, so they're paying the same for every gallon that they get, the, it's just a higher base rate. So, so the way I calculated those, a hundred, if you use, so, sorry, so on the four inch meter?
Yeah.
If I used a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons through my three-quarter inch meter, my bill would be that.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, the, the cost per gallon is staying the same, we're just saying that the larger meters have a higher minimum usage. So then in the future, as our costs change, and it costs more to deliver a gallon of water, we'll even just adjust that full scale of the note.
Do you have any, you know what it would cost to water a four acre piece in Alpha for this summer?
It'd require about five, so my ten acre piece requires about ten million gallons a year, so I'd save about five million gallons a year.
Five million gallons a year.
And that would be over six months, so roughly a million gallons a month, a lot.
A lot more than this.
A lot more than that.
So tonight we do have a resolution before us, sounds like one of you all figured, look at it, feel comfortable with it. Don't go over any other discussions.
Do you, do you have an idea, Ryan, of how many, I don't think we have any fours, right?
No. Oh, we have one that was in my mistake.
So we have one?
We have one four inch, no, no, it's not two, we got the school, or the, we got the school and the county building, so there's two four inch meters in the system right now.
So there's two, how many threes roughly, you know?
Church is a two, is that?
I think it's two. I thought they went up because, is that what they went up to?
The church is a large meter, I don't know if it's a two or three, I'd have to go look.
Okay, anyway, and then other than that, we're pretty much three quarters?
Yes, so those are the, those are the three large meters.
There must be a two because their base rate is a hundred and twelve.
I, I recall it being a two, but I know there was a lot of back and forth, so I, I'd go look and hold it before I vote, for sure.
Didn't they go with like a second meter, is there two, did they do anything?
They have a second fire line. And, and the school's done the same thing, so the fire line's separate from their, their use here.
Okay. All right, Kevin.
I was just comparing our old.
These are the old ones, and they go, I think the only change is, do you use the last sentence and add it, the four inch meter?
So this is exactly the same? No, that was the intent, except for the base rate, so, and the old one, the base rate was twenty, that was, it was that number, four twenty thousand gallons.
So we're clarifying.
And I think what, anyway, I, I think this is more, you know, so, so basically, on the, on the old fee structure, you were paying more per gallon, to have a bigger meter. And, and here, we're saying you pay the same per gallon, you just have a higher, have a higher minimum. So basically, if you're not going to use a lot of water, don't put in a big meter.
Right.
So if you're debating between a two and a three, you're incentivized both initially and ongoing to put in smaller two meters.
Yes. Should we be charging those places though, more for their water? Well, it's just a base, you've got to cover it.
So you mean, should we charge them more than just thirty-five dollars and twenty thousand gallons?
Should we charge them more for water than a residence would charge?
There's many lot, many, many thoughts on that, as there are people that made the arguments.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's a very common one, it's very common to charge more or a different rate structure for the larger meters, because they have a different effect on the system.
Yeah.
Not only initially with the impact fee, which is pretty much universal, that a larger meter has a bigger impact fee, but ongoing, the, the maintenance and the, the storage and all those other things have impacts too. And so there's a prevailing logic that larger meters pay more.
And we decided to just maybe not worry about that right now, because we have three of them, type of thing?
Well, and so we are doing that with a higher base rate, you know, so we are charging more, the two inch meter's going to charge a hundred dollars.
gallons of water.
Yeah. So for example, the church, they're going to use that much water, so they're going to continue to pay.
Most of us don't use that much water either, very few of us use over seven thousand gallons of water a month. So how much, do we know how much the school uses at all, or yeah?
We've been told the range is between twenty and fifty thousand gallons a month.
And they're essentially buying a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yes, there's some discussions about whether or not we should build them as a three or a four, a long story, we, maybe we need to build them a three or, but, but the four got installed, but I don't think that either the town or the school district ever approved the four. Myself and Paul Burke were going back and forth, trying to get plans finalized and things done, and a three became a four somewhere in that process, but I don't think I ever checked with you guys, and Paul never checked with the school district.
It just seems to me that five hundred and forty-five dollars for a water bill for a school, whoa. I, I don't know, that just seemed really low to me.
Well, right now, the discussion's staying at kind of the three where it was designed, so it's the three fifteen.
I charge a three fifteen, then it's even lower.
And they're having a problem with that, actually.
Wow. Yeah, John, just a question. What's, what's your basis for that statement? It just seemed like a school would use a lot of water. Twenty to thirty thousand gallons is what they're using on a gallon. Three hundred dollars for that? That seems, seems really cheap.
Yeah, but John, you've got residents, just single residents gives up twenty thousand gallons at thirty-five dollars.
No. Oh, yeah, you could have.
Yeah, you could. So, so if you compare that to what you say, wow, that's a lot of money. Look at the gallons it could be just by the, the one resident for thirty-five.
Look what could be used here for five hundred? Hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons. That seems, they had a bottle and selling.
I've got a question for someone that's lost here. What's the cost of the water? In other words, we're talking about income here, but we're not talking about production costs.
How much it costs us to produce?
How much are you, how much of the cost you produce?
Yeah.
That should be the basis and then go from there.
And, and the cost to produce, we, we've calculated that a few times. The, the biggest variable is the manpower to go up there and check the system and, and keep it operating. And, and so we've been, I guess Lynn can answer that question better on the budget, but the income and the expenses are okay. Is that a first statement?
Fairly, fairly close, actually.
And, and so I guess, I, I can calculate the mechanical cost, the cost of the electricity in the corner.
All the new tank and all of that.
Sorry.
The bond?
The bond.
Yeah.
That's, we were twenty-five years, I mean, we're thirty year bond, I think, and so we've been doing it for five years now.
So that's all covered in that, in the cost?
At this point.
One, one thing I see with this too is I don't know that it encourages, uh, conservation.
That's true. It's a valid point.
Well, the town never has encouraged conservation.
Sure we have.
Twenty thousand gallons on a residence?
It used to be thirty-five and we cut it to twenty. That's, that's a lot of conservation. Yeah, but we're not.
Well...
And we went from thirty-five to twenty. That's a huge conservation. I understand what you mean. It's still a good deal, right?
Yeah.
But man, I just see five hundred and fifty bucks and a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of water.
Yeah, but now let's go back to the residents if they're paying...
And I think they should pay less.
Okay, at thirty-five dollars for twenty thousand gallons, if you have five of those residents, five times thirty-five, you went there, you got twenty thousand, that's a hundred and twenty thousand gallons.
Yeah.
And then you've got...
Half that much income.
So, does the school really pay a lot?
No.
I'll tell you, when it came to me as far as the base rate, I thought it was actually a great idea because even though they, they may have this to use, the, the school or somebody bigger places probably aren't going to use it, but they could and they, that's why they have the bigger valve. And so base rate is, uh, whether these forty gallons or fifty, forty thousand or fifty thousand or twenty thousand, they're still gonna be paying that three fifteen up to the eighty and then over it. So, you know, some of these people may, may never go over those gallons, but, but they're gonna have that minimum base rate is where the town kinda needs to be to stay flush with all the other expenses.
Question, if the, someday in the future, if that, uh, needed to be reevaluated.
It's right on the second page.
Is that always open?
Yes.
We've done this two or three times in the last one year.
So in the future, the rate...
You guys have looked at this again, so we could look at it again next month if you wanted to.
Okay.
John, look at the second page. The resolution itself carried over to a second page.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know that we want to, but I believe you could pass the new rate every month.
No.
Well, I think John's got a point. And that point being is if, if you charge more and you want to do a bond next time. In other words, you have to make a fund available just for your improvements, your capital improvements down the road. I mean, he's got a point. That's, and as does he. I mean, if we're all using that water and we're gonna allow growth in the community and we have to have money set aside to improve that system that comes coming. And is there a fund for that?
I can tell you up in, up at Empire, one of our lodges, a thirty-two unit lodge, we go through, our average water bill's two grand a month. And it's, it's less than a hundred, it's like a hundred thousand gallons of water. But they are the, you know, the highest water rate there is. And I've seen the highest since around like Christmas. Well, I mean, they'll have like a ten thousand dollar water bill.
So I think, I, I have to agree with John. The, the one thing this doesn't do well is encourage conservation. And there, there are other logics where institutional gets one rate and industrial gets another rate and residential gets a third rate. And talking with the council, and we've done these in the past, is well, how do we just, you know, does it cost us any more to deliver a gallon of water to you than to you? If it doesn't, then how do we charge differently because your uses are different? And, and so that's how we got to here. And I was hoping the base rate was sort of a, a small tweak to help with the, the fairness issue of, of delivery.
Do you have any idea, Ryan, and I mean, I don't expect you to, but do you know what any other schools pay for a water fee?
I meant to look up some of the Heber City, what they're paying in Heber City and I, I don't. Sorry, that would be...
But with our analysis that you've done at least two times, I know as far as our rate structure, structures. Each time we do it, it seems to get a little more accurate as far as our costs versus, I mean, when we do the budget and you'd mentioned that and things, and we sit down, we, we look at those costs and they're, it's not really making a whole lot of money per se as far as the water account.
But we're covering our costs. So to your point, I, I can calculate the electricity and the flooring, but if we look at the overall budget, you know, the paying back the bond, paying our people to maintain it, we're, we're right where we need to be. So that's where I say our costs are about right.
So we would have to borrow money every time we need to do capital improvements?
So there, well, so we are collecting impact fees for the capital improvements that are in the CIP, the capital improvement plan. And that's where most of our improvements will come from, where I also have a, what do we call it, a replacement fund?
The reserve that the...
Yeah, the, the reserve fund that, as part of our bond requirement to replace the system over, I can't remember, I think it's in thirty or forty years. We have to have enough money to replace the system. So we, we are putting that money away so that in the future, when we have, you know, when the infrastructure we just built is ready to be replaced, we have money for it.
I guess kind of what you're thinking is, um, just like a business, we have, we want, you know, good businesses to come into town to get offsets and tax and higher. So it keeps our taxes, residents lower. And that's to kind of think of the same thing on the water where, you know, if you have commercial usage on the water, why don't they pay more? So that keeps our stuff down lower or that it will, uh, help replace, uh, the lines versus coming out of our pockets as residents. They're gonna be kind of stockpiling that money for us and at the time that we need to use it. Yeah, kind of same, same premise.
Well, I, I don't think we should forget that the school did pay for the branch drive line.
Yeah, but I, I think that the school is different than commercial because that way it's coming out of our pockets anyway. So the more we charge them, the more we're charging ourselves. So, but I'm thinking like commercial or, um, the county building, would be a fine line because we're taxing ourselves again. So, but if you had any other businesses come in that needed water, you can tax them at a higher rate or charge them a higher rate for that commercial use and they can pass it on to the end user. But as residents, our stuff would stay lower and we'd be able to maintain the system better.
I personally agree with that outlook because, you know, all commercial is usually a higher rate, whether it's property tax, whether it's water rates, whether, you know, in this case, we're talking about the valves or the meter size. And, uh, you know, a three inch meter can't have a big demand if it's opened up, so.
I think that, I like the rate that we have now because we don't have really any commercial that's sucking, you know, from that source. So it's all residential or the school, um, and the county building. So I think at this point in time, I think this rate goes good and we can definitely, it's easy, it's straightforward. You can definitely see how everything just, you know, lays out. But I think in the future, chances is we start to grow out, we would, I'd like to look at that as possibly having a commercial use, maybe on the side here or something.
Well, we can look at, you know, rate structure, I mean, kind of the whole paradigm, cause there's, there's a lot of them. You know, there, there's ones that are better for conservation, but they had other issues. And so the, the attempt was I was trying not to rewrite the whole book, um, but, but make a tweak that made it better.